Please rise for the passage of the proceedings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the regime of justice for all.
My call is meeting in Independence School District 544 to order. Clerk, can you establish a form for us, please?
I'm Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Ms. Hermes.
Present.
And Stephen Vigasa.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented for tonight?
So.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda passes. We will now move into our public meeting on our technology plan and internet safety policy. Mark Maston is our go-to on this one, and so...
And I'll be brief. Just like last year, this hearing is required as a result of a law that was passed many, many years ago. And everybody was concerned about this nebulous thing called the internet. And would my child be safe because they don't want to do any nasty stuff on the internet? Well, as it turns out, we had to also create technology plans. The original plan that we had was some forty-some pages long. The last one we had to do was ceased two years ago and was maybe half a page long. Just basically saying that we comply with the internet safety policy. So that's how far we've come along in technology planning. It's become pretty much mainstream. And so the internet safety policy basically says the school district will use a device to screen and monitor and protect our children from certain things that meet a certain criteria. We do buy that service, have a box in place that intercepts every single thing that comes through our network, and will scan for the nasties and block it. But at the same time, kids are pretty savvy and parents have issued handheld devices. And the kids know very well how to move from our school network to their cellular network and get around our system because now they're not on our network. So parents need to be aware of that. But other than that, very simple. Anybody from the public have a question on internet safety in their school district?
Ask the question if you do.
Okay, and that's it.
Thank you, Mark.
And I hope next year, someday, the legislature pulls this off, one of your requirements, because it's quite up there.
True. Okay, continuing on for our agenda, we have a resolution acknowledgements.
I'd like to offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. A thank you to Michael Harlow for the donation of a saxophone to the Kennedy Secondary School Music Department, to Sammy Ebert, Women of Grace, Grace United Methodist Church, Candy Olson, Lisa Severson, and Ryan Muckout for their donations to the Otter Angel account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals. Also, thank you to Nelson Auto Center for their donation of winter gear for students at Cleveland School.
Do I have a second on that resolution?
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Ms. Hermes.
Yes.
Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, we have Ryan Johnson here from IQ Academy.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I'm proposing a request for a work-based learning teacher for IQ Academy to begin second semester. Looking to get more opportunities for our students. I anticipate that it'd start with one section at the high school to offer the work seminar program, then working with that instructor to try and get approval from the state for some work-based learning credits. The work base, the work seminar, you can offer without the state approval and offer credit to students, but then you need approval for the work-based learning credits. Work with that individual to submit the paperwork to the state for that. So I hope this will be a position that we can grow in. Work-based learning credits for our IQ students, we do have many students that are working, so we can help support them. Earning their high school diploma would be a great opportunity for our students. Little updates, IQ numbers are at 718 as of today. Any questions?
Just on the process, on the work experience, you know, with the state and that. How long does the state, after you've submitted the request, how long does it usually take? I think it's MDD is the one that's going to approve it.
Correct.
How long does it usually take for them to get back? And maybe Dean can answer that question since we've gone through it before, to get back to us about approval or more information or, I don't know, normal?
I think ours took about a half a year.
Okay.
To finally get everything checked off.
I think it'll help because the district has a position, but we'll have to tweak it a little bit for IQ School.
Is there, that position here now, that teacher goes and observes students and works with the businesses, and how will that work with IQ Academy students?
So, anticipated IQ won't be as much internship based. It'll be, you know, having current jobs, so using that instructor, verifying if it's, you know, paychecks, to make sure they're getting the number of hours required. That's something brainstorming with Mr. Monkey and Superintendent Drake as well. Might be a case where if we can contract with others throughout the state, because there is a requirement to visit the work site.
Right.
You might have the opportunity to contract with people around the state if it's not possible for the individual hired to make that in-person visit. Brainstorming out loud, but that's something we're looking at now, Superintendent Drake is going to reach out to the service co-op, see our contacts for that.
And normally, how many times are you required to visit your, you know...
Is it once a year?
Or once a term, we'll probably do it more often than that, but at least that would be the minimum requirements.
Ideally, to have somebody in the metro would be good because that's where our population base is.
Because I'm thinking Mrs. Anderson goes and visits these businesses even, I mean, many times.
Yep. And hers is more kind of internship-based, right? That'd be a challenge for IQ Academy.
Okay. Because she's also teaching a class, right, with some skills, some job skills for students?
Is that the work seminar course?
Okay.
So that's what we're looking to offer second semester, do that seminar course, which would then, seeing numbers and interests, lead to what does that look like for work-based learning for IQ students? It's kind of the first step in growing that program for IQ.
And just to clarify, students would be required to take the seminar course before they could take the OGT?
Or concurrently if we're able to get that next year as well.
Okay. Any other questions from the board about the position or just the program itself? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Moving on to our next report is Scott Koberg, McKinley and Adams School.
Good evening. So as I walked up here and just realized, I think this will be the last presentation that I give with Mr. Mark Maston sitting over here by my side.
Thank you.
Yeah. I like the sound of that. Yeah, but...
Not because of you, though.
Well, I will say that, yeah, I've really enjoyed Mark. He's been very helpful to me in my position, so, yeah, thanks for all your good work all these years.
Thanks.
Just thinking about some fun and exciting things coming up here in our elementary schools in the next week or so, as we near our Christmas break, just see a lot of extra things happening in the schools that are kind of fun and exciting. I just want to share a few of those with you, and then I want us to talk a little bit about one other item. So, this week, are all of our kindergarten students on one day and all of our first grade students on another day. We're going to board some buses and head downtown to a Center for the Arts and attend what is called Dance and Dessert. This has become an annual tradition for our students in grades K-1. Of course, it's the Fergus Falls School of Dance who performs, and we find that our young students really, really enjoy the music and the lighting and the costumes and the movement, and it's a good experience for them. The dessert part for our little kids is when they're leaving the Center for the Arts, they're handed a little mini candy cane. So, just thank you to Fergus Falls School of Dance and Center for the Arts for that opportunity for our little students. Also, also this week, at Adams School, all six of our second grade classrooms are giving a Christmas program. We have a two o'clock program tomorrow, and a two o'clock program Wednesday, and a two o'clock program on Thursday, two classes each day. So that's under the direction of our new music teacher, Mrs. Ruth Umlough. And we're looking forward to that opportunity for families to come in and watch and listen to their students perform. Also, this week at McKinley, apparently it's my understanding, we're going to have a day called Grinch Day. And I believe one of our own school board members plays a big part in that, so we're looking forward to having one of our board members coming in costume and reading to the classroom. So I think that's become an annual tradition.
I've done it for five years or four years now?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I read the Grinch story, and then I play the song on my guitar and sing with the kids for the whole grade. It's fun, it's a good time.
Thanks for doing that. And then next week, our eighth grade band is coming over to tour all of the elementary schools in town. They're going to break up into little groups, and then they just kind of informally walk above the building, stop and play music, and they might go into classrooms and play songs. So we thank Mr. McGowan, the band director, for organizing that. Then I did want to mention our STEAM team at Adams School. Two teachers that have really taken a leadership role in that, first grade teachers, Kim Walbotny and Jeremy Knick. There are a number of other teachers that are a part of that, along with some volunteers that come in. But we just finished our first round of STEAM team, opened it up for 21st graders and 22nd graders, and they would come for four consecutive Mondays. So very, very popular after-school program run through the community. And round two of STEAM team is going to be coming up here in the not-too-distant future. Okay, and then I wanted to just take a couple minutes just to go in-depth a little bit. I know that you've probably seen this, but it was a part of a very long and lengthy and thick report that Kerry Thompson gave to you on the World's Best Workforce, but I just wanted to highlight something that we did at McKinley and Adams Schools last year, okay? But before I talk about this, I want you to think of a student, and I want you to think of three categories of students. The students who come to school on average four out of five days, the student who comes to school on average nine out of 10 days, and then the student who comes to school on average 19 out of 20 days. So we're talking an 80% offender, a 90% offender, and our goal for every student is 95% or better. To reach that 95% or better out of 170 school days, you need to miss eight and a half days or less. But what we did, it was over a year ago now, right? So I'm talking about last school year. Coming into last school year, we identified 31 kids who had missed 20 days of school the year before. So those kids in kindergarten and first grade, we identified 31 kids who had missed 20 more days. And we made a point and an effort to ask our teachers to reach out to those families whenever those students were absent. And over the course of the year, we had a combined total of our teachers make 750 communications with families regarding the importance of school attendance focusing on those kids. Now, of those 31 kids that we identified going into last school year, there were six of those students that either didn't start the school year with us or didn't finish the school year with us. So we had data to look at the 25 of them, how did they do then with this extra effort on the part of our teachers to contact those families? And we told, we asked our teachers, hey, make a contact, just make it positive, hey, we really missed your child today, students were asking about your child today, that kind of thing. So what we found was 18 of those 25 kids improved their attendance. You know, anywhere from a student improving by two days all the way up to a student improving by 25 days and anywhere in between. And it came out to be an average of 9.3 days of improved attendance. And so the average number of days missed for those 18 students then during last school year was 16.7 days. So that group of students had an average daily attendance rate of 90%. So there's your group of, you know, coming nine out of 10 days, which is still not where we want to see it, but with all that extra effort, we were able to get the average for that group of kids to 90%. So then what about the other seven? So 18 of 25 went up, but there were seven that actually dipped. Of those seven kids, one had one more day of absence compared to the year before, another a day and a half, three, three and a half days, nine and a half days, 20 days, and 36 days. So then the average number of days missed for those seven students was 39.2 days. And the group of students had an average daily attendance rate of 76.9%. Now, when removing the one student who was kind of an outlier, the one student who missed 36 more days than the year before, to miss a total of 80 and a half days for one student, if we remove that outlier, the average daily rate for attendance for that group of six students was 81%. So there's your four out of five days coming to school, four out of five days. So it was just really interesting. I think sometimes we don't, we don't do a good enough job of going back and really kind of digging in and, okay, we made these efforts, now did these efforts, what did we find from these efforts? And so I was able to share this information at a staff meeting at Adams School the other day. Still haven't had a chance to share this with the teachers at McKinley, but obviously the point was, hey, all of our extra efforts to contact these families of these students that we've identified were effective, and it was very good. 18 out of 25, that's a good, that's a good percentage, and it's worth, it's worth the time and effort. So that was in that World's Best Workforce report, and just wanted to highlight that a little bit. That's my report, and thank you for your time, and I would hope for any questions.
When you are looking at the teachers reaching out to a student that missed, is it only the students whose parents didn't communicate, or if the student brought note the next day? Or was it just any, they missed for any reason, or?
So our focus was these kids that had been identified, these 31 kids that ended up being 25, but the focus was really on those 25, whether it was an excused absence or an unexcused absence, because oftentimes what we find is that some families know that, well, if I call, it's going to be an excused absence. So this idea of excessive excused absences can be, whether it's unexcused or excused, the bottom line is they're missing school. So an excessive excused absence can be problematic. All that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Our next report will be from Tindy Ronder, Cleveland Elementary Principal.
Good evening.
Evening.
Since the last time I recorded, many of the 544 Foundation grant items have arrived, and they're being put to good use and really being appreciated by all the teachers. And so I just really, I wanted to acknowledge a sincere, our sincere appreciation to the 544 grant, our foundation, for all the things that they do make possible. We appreciate their efforts, and we are benefiting from those grant items that we have now. And one of the grants that was granted was to support the Otter STEAM team. Like Mr. Koberg referenced, it originated at Adams, and with the teacher's support and enthusiasm, it has now grown and is becoming available for students who attend Cleveland Elementary School. 24th grade students have been meeting the past five Mondays and have been building robots using Lego Mindstorm EV3s. It's a kit that they're, they have all the equipment in them so they can create and build a robot, and they've learned how to program the robots to do a sequence of tasks and maybe say something even. And then tonight was their culminating event, and they were able to show how their robot works and complete the sequence of steps that they were assigned. And then at the end, they all went into the lunchroom and raced their robot. So they had a lot of fun, and it was a nice little celebration after school today. So very well attended with 24th graders attending. The next Otter STEAM team activity will start on January 13, and this is going to be made available to all the second grade students who attend Cleveland. And then later on thereafter, the third grade students will have an opportunity to become involved as well. So good things are happening with that. The week of Thanksgiving, Cleveland began the annual community, community service project that we call Presents for Pets. And this has been longstanding annual event where students get to learn more about our Humane Society and how it benefits not only our community but all of Otter Tail County. We have Jaclyn from the Humane Society come to Cleveland, and we do a little interview with her with smaller groups of students so that students have a chance to ask questions. She shares about what they do at the Humane Society and some of the needs that they have, some of the ongoing things that they need for each pet, what they do when a pet is brought to the Humane Society. And in the end, students learn how they could volunteer at the Humane Society as well. And just last week, I learned one student in particular, I was pleased to hear that they had already visited the Humane Society and were learning about how they can volunteer and plan to volunteer on a regular basis. So some of these things really do start right at school with information being shared, and then families do take advantage of that. So that was really fun to hear. So over the course of this time between Thanksgiving and Christmas, students are invited to bring in items and add them to our collection around a Christmas tree for the Humane Society, and all sorts of donations are coming in, from old bath towels and rugs to brand-new pet toys. They just have a whole bunch of needs at our Humane Society. So that's growing. And then in conjunction with this project, we have a little fun. We have Pets on Parade, it's a big bulletin board in the first hallway of Cleveland, and students are, and teachers too, are invited to bring a picture of themselves with their pets or pets, and they're put up on the bulletin board. So it's an added attraction during the month of December. And then these next two weeks are full of various activities. Tomorrow and Wednesday, fourth grade classes are inviting their parents to school in the afternoon for a literacy and math event. They pull up some of the math games that they have been learning during their math instruction, and they've been writing some stories and essays, and so there is an opportunity to share, share what they're learning during their school day. And then they have some clothes and some costumes and pictures and hot chocolate, of course, so lots of fun there in the afternoon, and it's always great to get parents and families into school. The following week, third grade classes invite their parents in for some gingerbread house making, and those creations are lots of fun to see. The kids are thrilled of getting to take those home. And then on Thursday, December 19, the fourth grade orchestra will perform their very first concert. There are 104 students participating in an orchestra this year, and they present this wonderful concert with all the songs that they've learned so far, and even a couple of familiar holiday tunes, to their parents and families who are able to attend in the Cleveland gym. The orchestra takes up half of the gym, and the rest of us fit pretty snugly into the other half of the gym to enjoy their, enjoy their concert. And this concert will be livestreamed for people who aren't able to attend in person, but it will be livestreamed, so another way for families and just relatives to enjoy the performance. Lots of good things are happening this week. Any questions?
Any questions for Tindy?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next report is from Dean Monkey, our principal at Kennedy Secondary School.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry what's been mentioned already before, kind of tis the season to try to get out and about a little bit and have our students more involved in the community. And both our high school and middle school doing a great job with this. Our high school has recently completed a food drive. They got well over a thousand pounds to donate to our local food shelf. Special thanks to Shane Tilke and the rest of the student council members for leading that charge, which was really an effort on all of the classes, and I guess our sophomores went out this year in relationship to how much they produced. They're also involved in Penny Wars right now, kind of a fundraising opportunity, and they'll probably be looking to move those funds towards the Salvation Army. They have a goal of at least about $1,600 to raise. And then our, our middle school recently also produced, participated in a food drive in cooperation with the Family Consumer Science classes and the community education. Both Katie Hechek and Mary Madison do a good job of working together to try to gain a little bit more foodstuffs for the backpack program that is run through the United Way. So again, a great cause there. And our middle school is also involved in a Penny Wars event right now, so if there's any change left in the community, I'll be surprised. It comes in fast and furious, and we just hope each year that our change counting machine kind of holds together. Mark is our resident expert on keeping that machine running. We might have to call him back and take care of that in the years to come. But the, I don't even want to guess the amounts that they raised. I mean, it's thousands of dollars that they put together to do that. Our middle school students just go crazy in a very good way, and we appreciate all that. And also that our middle school student council is going to get out and about with some volunteer hours right down at the Salvation Army. So a great opportunity to get some kids actually out in the community with that as well. Our high school student council recently attended a regional event in Detroit Lakes this year. Mr. Tilke took our student council over there. Well over 250 students from the area were present for that day. So get a chance for them to kind of compare notes in relationship to how student government can be managed these days. And then kind of another idea that came out of the student council is next Monday, they're going to go off for a couple hours to Brown Home here in town. We have such a positive response when we send our royalty groups out to our nursing homes and other stops here in the community, that they thought it would be just a good idea if we do that a little bit more than once. So they're going to go to Brown Home here before the holidays and Pioneer Care after the holidays to just spend some time with some residents that are there. Great service learning opportunities for kids to get out and about. Our registration process is in high gear already for next year with our high school students. Thanks to our counselors, they've asked for some feedback in relationship to course descriptions and that kind of information. So that's all coming back to the office. Kerry Thompson has had a chance to review that, I've had a chance to review that and make some suggestions. And so that booklet needs to get put together here by the first of the year, so it could be shared in January because the students will be registering in February. So that work is ongoing. Not a lot of major changes that I'm seeing for next year, just cleaning up a lot of descriptions, but not a lot of new courses that I'm seeing being proposed. We also have a group that's meeting with PLP is the letters there, and it stands for Personal Learning Plan. You might be familiar with what has usually been called the Otter Success Plan. Anyway, it's a college and career readiness plan that we have our high school students go through. Thanks to Catherine Anderson, she is chairing up this group to take a closer look at those personal learning plans, tweak them. I think a lot of the things that were in the Otter Success Plan will be showing up again, but we wanted to review all of that. And also, we're switching from software products, from Naviens, which we were in, to NCIS, which is more the state-sponsored software package that comes with that. So with that change, we just thought it was appropriate to take a close look at this and see what changes we need to propose for next year and the years to follow. And always driving this to be more electronic. In other words, we can make it more digital, students can take some of these products with them. Students can take some of these products with them then as they graduate rather than just have a document that lays around somewhere. So we're trying to get this to be as digital as possible so we can save real work and also have it available for the future. And then of course, everyone knows that we're in concert season. We're on number four of seven as of tonight. Three complete, four to go. Tonight, we have the high school choir concert, which is, I was just in there for a few minutes today and it is going to be fabulous. Starting at seven o'clock tonight, if anybody's on TV out there or whatnot, please come on in, show up early. I'm sure seats will be at a premium. Seven o'clock for high school concert tonight. On Thursday, we're doing a 12 noon, fifth and sixth grade choir concert. We've done that now for the last couple of years mainly because we're getting too big. We just can't throw a fifth through eighth grade choir concert together and hold it in our auditorium. Too many people coming and too many students participating are great problems to have. But on the 12th, the 12 noon, we hope that's a good omen. We're going to have that on Thursday. And then the following Monday, on the 16th, we have a middle school seventh and eighth grade concert in the evening at seven. And finally ending up with a five o'clock concert on the 18th for our high school orchestra to be the last one of the season there. So if you can make any of those, I'm sure that they'll all be fabulous. Questions for me?
Dean, I just wanted to mention, it was four weeks ago today that we had Veterans Day and I was able to attend your program and also Tindys. And just, we haven't had you folks here to talk to us since then, but both of them well organized, well attended, just really impressed. And appreciate what both you did and anything else that happened in the district that I wasn't able to hit that day. But those were the two I went to and they were both very well done, I just want to thank you personally.
Oh, thank you. We keep getting creative in relationship to how can we put more people in the gold gem?
Yep.
Because the community is starting to show up more and more with the years here. And I have my standbys, music department, Mary Pettit with School of Dance, you know, just a few of those things that are just fantastic every year. So it really is fun to put together.
Yeah.
And any questions?
All right, thanks.
We will now move on to our board reports. We have Kirby Anderson, Vice Director for Education Foundation and Finance.
Nothing from the finance committee today, but on the Vice Director for Education, just the way that the, with the dates follow, when we had our meeting in November, we had already met the foundation. And now this week, or this month, we're meeting on this coming Thursday at 11:00. So Jeff, if you're going to be there this year, we can hit the 12 o'clock concert if we need to. So we'll be meeting there on Thursday, October this week. There is one item that I think is worth mentioning that has come up in between the meetings. We did have a former alumni of our high school that passed away a while back. I'm not going to mention the name because then they're going to announce this later, but when she passed away, she left us almost $105,000. So that's a substantial amount of money when you consider that we just passed the $1 million mark as far as assets in the foundation. So there'll be more coming out of that, but I just thought I'd mention that because it's kind of a big deal. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Kirby? Melanie Cole, Special Ed Co-op, Region One and Activities.
Activities committee met and reviewed some requests for coaches, et cetera. That was last month. And that was just an internal process and I think I didn't, haven't checked back to see if things are still moving forward with the changes, but that was, that was something that took place there. We, Region One, we had the meeting late last month. It's the Technology Service Cooperative and always just talking about best way to do service provision. A lot of that lately is focused on staff and getting the right staff and getting them trained because there's been such an influx of utilization of the synergy program. But, so that was the primary topic there. Today, we had Special Education Cooperative and I did a little bit of honorary recognition of Mark Maston, his final 144 millionth Special Ed Co-op meeting. And he loved every one of them. But no, we recognized him there and just talked about the kid count, which is important in special education to make sure the correct districts are getting appropriate funding because there is a lot of cross-pollinization there. And then personnel moves. So that's about it. That's the note I'll leave on there.
Any questions for Melanie? Thank you, Melanie. Missy Hermes, Staff Development and Curriculum Review.
Well, Curriculum Review does not meet in December. We won't meet again until January, but the Staff Development Committee met on Monday, December 2nd, and it was a very productive meeting. I think they finalized a lot of the plans for the January in-service and it looks like it's going to be an all-day workshop to help all teachers and even substitutes to go through that cultural competency training that's required by the Department of Education for relicensure. And so that's a relief to have that ready to go. So that'll be at the January in-service. And then the other thing that we did is really finalized the Staff Development Request Rubric, how in the future, going forward, people will ask for and qualify to receive that funding. And yeah, so that's what we did. And so, yeah, staff development. And really that, for this year, that budget is almost depleted. We're down to about $2,000 left for the rest of the year. The other thing I wanted to report on is that I have been attending meetings of the Native America Alaska Native Parent Organization. And we have a Native American Education Coordinator, that's Sarah Campa. And last month in November, we, Sarah and I and parents and students went to the Detroit Lakes Public School Powwow that was held. And that was a really excellent learning experience for the students. And so congratulations to the Detroit Lakes Schools because that's a very meaningful and important program that they're, and that they allow us to participate too. And there were students from other schools as well and families. It was great. And there are other activities coming up this year that Sarah and parents have planned, but that one was, I think that hopefully, hopefully that's something that our students can go to every year if they know.
Any questions for Missy? Thank you, Missy. Natalie Knutson, Wellness Policy and Buildings and Grounds.
None of my committees have met since last month, but I'll just mention that last week Jeff pulled together a group of us, including myself and Jason Bergstrand, who's from Partnership for Health and alongside the Thrive Initiative, thinking that that may be a good fit or good parallel for some of the cultural work that's being done within the district. So we just kind of had a preliminary brainstorming session with some folks from the different buildings of the district to just see what their thoughts were and how they see it maybe fitting in. So more to come.
Any questions for Natalie?
Okay, under my reports, Lakes Country Service Co-op Board, they are, we actually meet this Thursday, so I have nothing to report for them. Before I talk about the Minnesota High School League, I was just going to just bring up that the Minnesota School Board Association's Delicate Assembly met this last Saturday. There were 28 resolutions that were up for consideration. 23 of them did pass of those resolutions. The one that we submitted did not pass. And the main reason that they stated why it did not pass is the Minnesota State High School League was not asking for those funds to, for the state to give them, you know, to cover their deficit. And they thought that they could raise the funds through fee increases, which I'll talk about with their board meeting, and then also with sponsorships and things of that nature, that they could maybe be able to come up with some of that deficit and go a bad route at least for now. And if they do ask for it, then I think that the Minnesota School Board Association will definitely get behind it. So that was kind of their decision-making process on that. But like I said, there was 23 that did pass and it was a good debate. I mean, we had one resolution that actually got amended. The amendment got amended and it actually got called for, you know, called the question to vote and the two-thirds vote and actually had to use Rob's Rule of Order. And it was, it's kind of an interesting resolution to get through. So there was some good debate and it was a good thing. And I know they will come out with the resolutions that did pass and some more information for us to be able to look at. So that was, that was good. With the Minnesota State High School League, they did meet Thursday, December 5th, and they announced the Inside Out Initiative. Steering Committee is working with the Minnesota Vikings and they are planning to kick off an event for school leadership teams. And so that's one of the things that they are working on that they believe will be going forward. They also did approve the agreement with a Michigan-based website developer to build a new Minnesota High School League website. So they did go ahead and approve that. And then they just did some increases in state fees, which they talked about doing, and they will now be charging for boys tennis for the state tournament for people to come watch and also with girls tennis. Clay Target will now have a registration fee of $35 per participant, starting in 2020. Robotics will now have a registration fee that will be implemented in 2020 through 2022. 2020, it'll be $500 per qualifying team. That'll go to 750 in 2021 and then to $1,000 in 2022. And so...
What? How much?
Going from 500 in 2020, in 2021, it'll be $750 per team. And then 2022, yep, will be $1,000 per team. So, and then they also, for speech, will also have a registration fee will be implemented for the 2020 state tournament with a $20 per entry fee. And so they are going through the fee base to try to make up some of that. And that was one of the things that they felt they were going to do. And so that's just one of the things they're going to do. So and I personally believe there'll be more fees coming and more ticket prices being increased to try to make up for their deficit. And then girls tennis, they are working towards and they got a recommendation to add a third class. And so that's been something they've been working on and they're finally, I think, believe are going to move forward with that. And so I look for that coming at some time through the next section of realignment and stuff that they'll have a third class for state participation. And that's all I have to report. Any questions?
I was just going to comment that at six o'clock, we have our hearing.
I know. I see it. I see the quicken. I'm going to see if I get through Steve here. Steve Bigasaw, Legislative Liaison and Meeting Confirmed.
It's going to take a really long time. I don't have anything to report.
There we go. We, so we're going to wait with Superintendent Drake's report and I am going to wait 30 seconds.
Okay, why do you do that? The robotics thing, is there some kind of, I mean, is there a very large amount of money that it costs to think that's going to put that thing on? I'm just looking up here. I mean, there must be a reason why they have that.
There must, yeah, to rent the facilities, phones and stuff like that and...
They have sponsors. They have lots of sponsors, like First, whoever that is.
Sure.
I don't know if they're having trouble getting sponsors or...
Well, and they had some, they had some sponsors stop. And so that's where you have to find new sponsors and everything. So now moving into our public meeting, the Fergus Falls Public Schools Taxes Payable for 2020, and we're going to open up Dr. Mark Maston to talk about and have our public meeting.
As usual, this meeting is held every year to allow taxpayers the chance to express their opinions about the level of taxation within the school district and what they're getting taxed for. And as you can tell by the very large crowd today, I think they're very happy or at least content with the knowledge of what the school district is doing. The sheet that I provided to you is kind of the standard format that has been presented to you for many years. In the green is the new levy that is being proposed here. This would be for the fiscal 2021 school year that starts July 1st of 2020. The blue area is the one-year taxes that are being collected, just finished up collection here in November. And then of course, the change in percentages and so forth. The very top line item is driving most of what, the change in our taxes. It's up 9.8% and it's due to two factors, both of which are out of our control. The first of which is property values, which rose about 4.3%. The other portion is because parents are sending more kids to our school district. And so with that scenario and the formulas that we have, there's very little that the school district can do to cut back. In fact, as you know, most of our levies, especially the referendum levy, is partially funded. And if you don't levy, you lose the estate aid as well. So it is, it is a situation where the school district has control, but not really. In total, we're looking at a levy of $7,526,494.69. That's an increase of $334,000 from the year before, a 4.7% increase. And like I mentioned, our market values in the community rose by 4.3%. So you can tell property values is the, is the main driver here. I do have a thing called the tax rate. That tax rate is fictional. It's created by me. It's used as a measure so you can kind of compare from year to year, factoring out in things like property values. And you can see that our tax rate is actually going down compared to what the valuation of property is. So in other words, if you went to the gas station and pumped gas, the price is 32.6 cents per gallon, but you pump more gallons of gas and so your taxes are higher. That's basically the analogy that I can use. So it was mentioned earlier today that I had attended 400 school board meetings at the Special Ed Cooperative.
400 million.
I did, I did a quick analysis and by the time you add in Fergus Falls, which is about 1,250, Battle Lake, or excuse me, Breckenridge, Underwood, Rossay and Barnesville, I'm probably at 1,500 school board meetings. So this is the last one. Very thankful for every one of you for your help and supporting Boeum.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep. Any questions on the list? And of course, this will be finalized tonight, subject to any opinion from the public. And...
So in other words, the tax rate that you made, have you factored out the things that we can't control? The things that we can control...
No, no. What I'm saying is, if you look at property values, which we can't control, you're correct.
Right, yes.
And the amount of taxes. Yeah, it's kind of a rate of pay type of situation here. That 32.6 is its reduction. If property values had stayed the same, our taxes would have gone down.
Right.
But they didn't because property values... Okay?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mark. We are going to close our public meeting for the Fergus Falls Public Schools Taxes Payable for 2020 and move back into our regular school board meeting. And Superintendent Drake?
First order of business is really a pleasant job. I would like to honor Missy Hermes. This comes from, this is a complete surprise, obviously. But Missy completed phase one, two, three, and four of the school board's leadership training, which really demonstrates an awesome commitment to the board and community. So on behalf of the Fergus Falls Public School District and MSBA, you have a wonderful certificate suitable for framing to recognize your accomplishment. Periodically, now that we're rolling into the school year, this will happen... Periodically, now that we're rolling into the school year, this will happen on a monthly basis, but faculty and staff have the opportunity to recognize their peers for a job well done. And this is the list of nominees for honor staff recognition for the month of November. And as you can see, some of them were nominated multiple times, but I just want to thank those folks for their commitment to the district and the job that they're doing. We're changing things up a little bit this year to have a little bit more differentiation from some of the other recognition programs that we're doing. When a staff member nominates these folks, then I write a little personal thank you for the job that they've done and they're given that. And then if the building principals wish to do a certificate, they're certainly welcome to. But in the past, they received a certificate. I just have a preference to write a note of thanks to them instead. I just find it a little bit more personal, maybe. So that's how we're doing it. And again, congratulations to those folks for their contributions to the school. Also, this was our first, hopefully last, but unlikely weather event of the year. And so I wanna thank all the crew that helps clean out the sidewalks and the parking lots and get our district ready to roll for students and staff during the day. And a big shout out also to autotel coaches and the drivers for taking extra care on our winter roads, making sure everyone arrives safely. We did have a slight change in protocol this year. We use School Messenger to send out en masse the communications to staff and families in addition to some texting that I do and some media coverage. Elaine has graciously taken on the responsibility of the School Messenger piece. And all things considered, for our first time using School Messenger versus the old Remind app, I think things went pretty darn well. There are a few little tweaks that need to be made, but I think that's to be expected for a communication as large as this one. But by and large, between radio, television, Facebook, School Messenger, we did not hear any word that people weren't prepared for a two-hour late start. And we did not hear that anyone was dropped off two hours sooner than we expected them. So thanks to everyone for their work and the notification. Scott had mentioned the World's Best Workforce Report in school attendance, and these have been brought up before, but you see the administration wearing the 95% buttons. This is our, thanks to Sarah Kampa, report of our first quarter attendance. And you can see that we're, we're on track to hit that 95% right now. Now, granted, historically, the fall would be a favorable month for school attendance. Winter tends to bring more illness, and we've already had some issues with the flu rolling through like a lot of other districts. And then spring can get kind of complicated too with absences, especially with chronic absenteeism. But these are really good early results and our goal will be to continue the trend throughout the rest of the school year.
So that, sorry, that's an average of each student attended 90, like in kindergarten, 96% of the days or?
Correct. So the average student attendance for kindergarten right now is 96.05% through first quarter. Dean mentioned this already, so I'll just put a plug in for the winter concerts. Great opportunity to support the students and also recognize the staff for their hard work in preparing students for these. Natalie mentioned the Thrive Initiative already. Just a brief explanation of it with a little bit of historical context. The Bounce Back Program was originated in the community of Buffalo as a response to some trauma and tragedy in that community. And it really, for a small rural community such as ourselves, had an inward look at the kinds of stresses and things that impact our life and can we take a proactive approach to rewriting this narrative? And so a lot of concentration was done on living healthy lifestyles, which includes not only, you know, things like exercise and nutrition, but our mental health as well and well-being. And so Natalie had reached out to me, oh, probably maybe three weeks ago, somewhere in that neighborhood, and said, would there be an opportunity to get together? Some of the staff had expressed an initial interest and had met before about Thrive. And so we sat at the table and really looking at the program that they have together and the knowledge that they have through Lake Region and other community organizations and the curriculum they've already developed. This really does seem like a very natural match, complementary partnership with some of the work that we're going to be doing with school, culture, and climate. So long-term, I think it will be, again, an excellent partnership and will be a good, good fit moving forward to help all of our students thrive and not just students, but our staff as well. I am working on the Ferguson Falls Public Schools calendar. This is by no means the final draft, but this calendar poses some challenges with it because of the September 8th starting date. And so we'll have an FFBA meeting tomorrow morning. One of my questions to them is, this calendar mock-up was put together predicated on the, on a priority of starting September 8th, but still trying to wrap up basically by Memorial Day. And that's tough sledding with the start that late. What it basically means is when you hit, when you hit January at the end of the semester, other than Easter, you are pounding through your school calendar all that spring. And speaking from experience, those late February, that March gets really long if you don't have a break in there. Conversely, if we're going to put a break in there, that probably means bringing students back after Memorial Day, which isn't always looked upon very attractively either. And so there's gonna be a choice between a couple different philosophies, both of which will have their pros and cons. And as I mentioned before, as part of the Meeting Confer, I'm not particularly super fussy about the school calendar in terms of having some flexibility. Just know the trade-offs for the decisions that are made. My one caveat would be a calendar that would include a spring break, is that supportive of our families that may be single parent with children, those kinds of things? Do they have the resources to cover, you know, that week-long period when we're not in session when we typically would be? Certainly, next year's schedule would not accommodate a spring break even if we wanted one. It would be that tight. But tomorrow's after that meeting with the FFBA, looking at what some of their priorities might be. It would not take a lot of tweaking to have this thing basically rolled out for them to talk about as a, as a group and moving forward with it. Parent survey. This is part of the MDE process now, and this is for the parents and guardians. We're sitting at 10% after one week. Our goal is to hit 60 to 65%, so we have our work cut out for us. The survey takes about 20 minutes, which isn't terrible. The kicker is that if you have students in multiple buildings, you really should be doing a separate survey for each building. So you can see where that adds potentially quite a, quite a commitment on to, to our families. We will send out, we'll put another Facebook notification out. I'll send out another email request. And then the elementary principals are sending out half-sheets to the families, encouraging them to complete the survey. It'll close on December 20th and then we'll just move forward with whatever the results end up being in terms of participation.
So is the percentage based on how many surveys have been completed? So like, say Steve maybe has three surveys, so it's-
You have three surveys.
You get all three surveys or is it based on like the family?
It's based per building. So if I go into Cleveland, however many surveys were sent out, it'll tell me the percentage of Cleveland that were completed.
Got it.
And how do parents-
So it is based on number of surveys?
Number of students per building, like survey. How do, how do parents access the survey again?
There's a link that was emailed out and then we'll send it out again.
Okay, it has to be through email? It's not like, I suppose you couldn't have somebody go onto the website?
Right, because they're targeted, it's targeted to parents from that specific building.
Okay.
Yep. So the Facebook notification will be more of a general, please complete the survey. You'll have a link sent to you. And the email can be more direct with the links attached.
Did you say, is there a link on the Synergy app too? Because you have to log into that for your stu-, is there a way to, is that on the Parent View app?
I believe Jesse set the mass email using probably the Synergy database tied together, but I don't know the exact software that he pushes that notification out through.
Okay.
And then school messenger. That's what I was gonna say, on school messenger.
Okay, thank you.
Because honestly, I didn't, I didn't see the survey pop up in my email yet. And of course, I'm gonna take it, but it's, maybe it's because I get about 100 emails from the school a day. That's why. But I guess so the message is just check your email to parents.
It will go out again tomorrow. So definitely check email tomorrow and you should have it. If it doesn't go through, please let me know because that means we've got a, got an issue with the process.
Okay.
And a parent that doesn't have email, they can do it by paper or?
I believe we can print it off paper pencil. I'm not quite sure the avenue we would have to enter that data, but we could sure figure something out. Otherwise, people could access it through a, like the public library at one of the computers there. That would probably be, would probably be the easiest solution for people that don't have the technology in their home versus paper pencil. But that brings in some transportation issues and other types of things too that can be Therapy dog. So Kelsey Lage has gone through training with her dog and he is certified and she is a certified handler now. And she has asked the district if it would entertain the idea of bringing the therapy dog in as part of her work with students. Between the certifications and the record of the animals' immunizations, she really has met the district's policy for this. I can't tell you that I know for sure what benefit it will have at this point. So what we discussed is a trial basis where the dog would come in once every two weeks and we will see how things go. It has the potential to help forge relationships with students with anxiety and some of those other types of issues and can be a comfort to students in times of grief. It's also possible though that the animal needs to be attended to and that could pull someone away from their normal duties as well. So there are some pros and cons to this. And I think from the district's standpoint, if we just do a trial to see how this is working and then decide if, if the program should be discontinued or if it's continued, is it successful enough where you're adding more contact time with the animal or not? So the long and short of it is, we're doing a trial basis here. I don't know the answer to its effectiveness at this point, but we'll certainly evaluate.
But this is a therapy dog, not a service dog.
This is a therapy dog. It is certified, yes.
But not a service dog.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I missed which grades this is gonna-
This would be at the, at the high school, so she's, she's a 912 counselor. That is part of the technology committee. We've had several discussions of a one-to-one initiative with Chromebooks. The district is probably a purchase of three grades away from this being a reality. And so this would be grades five through 12. The lifespan of, of these machines is about five years. So they would, for us, there was some discussion that they would be in, basically in circulation about four years and then sold. And then so a student would need two of them basically to get through their time at KSS. Likelihood that some of the lower grades, they would be stored and contained in the classrooms, so they're not going home daily with the students. Students at some of those lower grade levels probably aren't quite ready for the responsibility of that equipment. But what's happening is as our computer labs age, they become unable to be updated to run some of the testing software and things that we're required to do in evaluating our student achievement. And the Chromebooks continue to go down in price and probably represent more utility, more flexibility instructionally and aren't required, they're not dependent on a sign-up lab where someone might have it during the hour you wanted it and so now you're out of luck. And so that's why these conversations are being entertained. But probably advantageous to the district over the long haul. The only tricky part is that on any given year, you're basically building into your budget the replacement of probably two, two grades worth of machines. So you do need to stay on top of it. But as the price continues to go down, it's less of a financial burden than it was maybe five years ago or so. So, questions about that?
Yeah, I was wondering about, we had trouble with the ones over Cleveland with the system software thing. So we're gonna pre-purchase machines so the kids can do the testing. So I'm just wondering, so what happens to the machines that were there? Are they gonna be able to be used at places elsewhere or have they reached the end of their life?
Pretty much, what you're talking about is we're going from a computer to what's called Chromebox. The computers themselves are so old that we can't load existing software on them to make them work. So they're just going to be probably recycled is what they're going to be done. And then, of course, the new ones come in at about $500 apiece for these particular units. The units that Jeff is talking about probably run around $150.
So the cost differential really between replacing the labs, you know, is muted by the fact that these are gonna be a lot more useful and just slightly less cost. I mean, there'll be, there'll be more cost, but they'll be more useful and-
Yeah, we've moved away from buying computers in the past. We used to buy like 200 of them at about $1,100 apiece. Now buying 200 at $150 apiece. It's, the price has gone down so much that it just makes this one-to-one thing much more appealing.
Sure.
These would be computers that the older kids can take home. It's theirs. Just out of curiosity, what happens when they break one?
Well, that's one of the things we're looking at. Either allowing parents to buy an insurance policy through us, X number of dollars, and then they're covered. Otherwise, they can opt out and if something happens to it, $150 buys them.
So if a parent's having a technical problem though, do they go to our tech team or how does that, or is there a private vendor that they would send their?
We haven't, we haven't figured that out. Depends on the type of damage. Some of the simple stuff we can do, others more complex. And then you gotta weigh it out. If it's, it's really expensive, then it's cheaper to buy a new one.
Sure.
One of the other issues that we have to factor in is content filtering, the internet policy that you were talking, you were talking about earlier. We still, since there are computers, have to somehow put a internet block on that even when it's outside our network and on families' network. And those services usually run about $10 per child.
One of the other challenges in addition is the repair and maintenance that you mentioned. One of the other challenges in addition is the repair and maintenance that you mentioned. But some districts have students take a class and receive credit to learn how to repair these things and it's a good experience for the kids and helps keep the machines to all that means.
Slave labor.
I'd probably frame it somewhat differently.
And these computers will be totally like web-based, they're not, there's no hard drive to them or anything, so it's just...
Correct, it's all hung out in the cloud and, yeah. So e-learning days are becoming a possibility.
Sure. One of the, I, I can't speak to you whether one-to-one initiative improves student achievement. I really haven't seen any conclusive data that says yes or no. There's probably as many articles that would say no as there are that suggest yes. For me, one of the selling points, aside from the utility in the classroom, was trying to level the playing field for students in poverty or without resources to have access to information. And for that, that was an important part of what I've looked at in the past in moving towards a model like this.
Do they have an option for people who don't have internet at home?
You can do portable hotspots. I'm sure no expert on this, but I think they're, I don't know if it's like $10 or $15 a month or something. It's, they're pretty cost-effective.
The other piece is if, we know in advance, we can download things onto the, and they can work offline. And then when they bring back, it syncs back up.
In some schools, check out those hotspot, hotspot hardware, set it home with the kids. But if you don't know, there's not, if you don't know there's going to be a whole school the next day until the next day, then it defeats that process.
So you anticipate having like more of a formal presentation or formal initiative towards the, I mean, to get this going if we're going to go through this spring is what we're kind of thinking?
Well, the implementation for next year.
Yeah, so kind of like so parents know what's coming so that, okay.
So what grades would get the computers again?
Five through 12.
Oh, every single grade would, okay. Okay, that's where it starts. But there's certain grades where they give replace after the, everybody gets their initial computer.
So the thought is that the student would have the unit for four years and then it's probably going to be sold while it still has some value.
All right. So ninth, ninth grade.
So that's my report, unless there are any further questions?
I think you missed one of the most important things. We did pie tasting.
Oh, we did do pie tasting.
We did the pie tasting over at the Area Learning Center. Judging. They found like two guys that are, you know, I guess most, fit us quite well.
That was a labor aplomb, I won't say.
And I didn't mean to make it for the gingerbread house judging the other day, but yeah, it's kind of fun to do that for the ALC.
And the kids did a nice job on those. And then I guess before I vacate the podium, just want to say thanks to Mark for his service to the district and his passion for the otters and all that you've done and the guidance and wisdom that you have given. And speaks very highly of you that even with the retirement looming, you've been willing to stand as a consultant and see some training for Blake and the finishing of them in school. So thank you very much, Mark.
Okay, moving on to our general consent items. We have the minutes from the November 18th board meeting. Bills and Treasuries Report, Kirby Anderson.
Yes, we did meet. Natalie and I met with Mark prior to this meeting and we went over the bills and the Treasuries Report. On the Treasury Report, we are down about 1.7 million from last month. Combination of factors that happened this time of year where we have a lot of money going out to pay bills, but with no state aid coming in this month and next month. So, so just kind of an annual timing thing. We went through all the individual bills, didn't see anything of significance. Just highlight a couple of things. We did make the final payment on the, on the swimming pool upgrade and got that taken care of. We had paid out the last of the audit and, and what we looked at as far as ECFE that we paid for at She Likes Country. And we just had a couple miscellaneous ones on some of the clothing and Mark was able to answer all of our questions quite admirably as usual. And so, and we did recognize that this is the last time that we're going to be reviewing the Treasury Report and the bills with Mark. So I thank him for, for his work in putting together this report every month. Thank you.
Any questions? Questions for me? I just have one question on the pool itself with the improvements add. Has that now helped with the water, like lost water and stuff like that?
Yes, there's no longer drips on the floor.
Or anymore and stuff like that, so very good.
That doesn't mean we're done fixing it.
No, of course not. It's water, right?
Yep, good.
Okay, personnel, Elaine Jenkins.
All right, we are still having changes. Support staff hires. We have a few special ed paraprofessionals here. Couple of them are replacements. One, the very first one is in addition to what you had approved last year, or excuse me, last board meeting regarding additional position hires. So Jaleen Tennyson, Trista Tostensen, and Brenda Harrington, all special ed paraprofessionals as designated in the, or the agenda here for their replacement. Amy Serol and Molly Frank, both as secretaries. And that's all under support staff hires. For support staff resignations, we have Bo Mathis, Special Ed Paraprofessional, and Lori Jensen, Secretary School Nurse, LPM. Support staff retirement, we have Sue Thorson, she's Special Ed Paraprofessional. Further down under new business, we have a resolution on her retirement. Certified Teaching Staff Overload, Lynette Ringquist. An additional piece there for IQ Academy due to student load. And then Certified Staff Hire, Jennifer Carlson, Long-Term Elementary Teacher Substitute at Adams School for a leave from a teacher. And so I recommend these all, these personnel changes for board approval.
We have a motion to approve the general consent items.
So moved.
Taking a seat, do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? General consent items pass. Moving on to old business, we have the FY '19 Fergus Falls Public Schools Financial Audit. Somebody wanted to, that was presented last board meeting in November. Somebody offer that motion to approve that audit as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to new business, we have the resolution on the retirement of Susan Sue Thorson. Whereas Sue Thorson began her employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in August 2000. And whereas Sue has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 20 years. And whereas Sue has done an excellent job as a special education paraprofessional and secretary for the district. And now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Sue Thorson for her 20 years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will somebody offer that resolution move towards adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move towards adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hammies, yes. Stephen Biggessa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Canutson?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Item number two is in addition, a .083 FTE for Work Experience Teaching Position at IQ Academy. That was presented earlier at the board meeting. Do we have a motion, does somebody want to offer that motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number three is the call for bids on the renovation of Lincoln Schools. Mark Masson, do you want to speak on this real quick?
Yes, where we're at at the process right now is, as of today, it was supposed to have been submitted to the state for review. I don't know when the state will be putting their stamp of approval on that. But in any case, if that happens to get stamped before January 13th, we want to get the bids, this project put out for bids as soon as possible. So I'm calling kind of a preemptive strike here in that event and, and we'll get these bids out so we get a good price.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the call for bids? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number four is the Lakeland Mental Health Center Agreement with ISD 544 effective 1-1, 2020 to 12-31-2020. This would be for school-based mental health practitioner, school-based mental health professional. At Kennedy Secondary School, both those positions, we have a school-based mental health practitioner for times two at Adams in Cleveland and a school-based mental health practitioner at McKinley. And this has been an annual motion for some time. Do we have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number five is the levy for taxes payable 2020. As Mark Masson has presented on our, our public meeting, public comment. Do we have a motion to approve that levy as presented?
And at the moment, if I put that in this?
Levy amount two?
Yep.
Yes. And it should match the document that Missy needs to sign.
Okay, so, so we're going to approve the levy for taxes payable for 2020 Someone offer that motion?
I'll offer that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Kirby? Now, this does not have to be roll call, does it? It just says motion, right?
It's not a resolution.
Any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. The last item that is not on your agenda for tonight is to take a moment and recognize Mark Masson. Yes, tonight's meeting will be the last time Mark will come to a school board meeting as our official business manager. Now, over the last 37 years, Mark has been a dedicated and seen Fergus Falls Public Schools, continued to move forward through a stewardship of district finances along with many other responsibilities Mark has taken on over the years. I have had the privilege of working with Mark for 19 of those years. And every organization needs the steady calm voice during good and bad times. And Mark has definitely been one of those voices for us. His passion for being an otter can be seen for anyone who has worked with him during this time. So Mark, on behalf of the current and past school boards, the administration, the staff and community, I'd like to present to you with this plaque and a thank you for your 37 years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools.
Thank you.
We wish you the best in the future. Glad you're not disappearing either.
No, I'm not.
So that concludes our regular school board meeting. Our next meeting will be our reorganization meeting, followed by our regular school board meeting on Monday, January 13th, 2020 at 5:15 right here at the Otter Community Room. Following this meeting, we will go into a work session to talk about, on to college report and attendance reports and strategic planning. And so with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second?
I'll second. I'll take Natalie.
I'll take Natalie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.